Good evening, everyone. Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First People of the Hunkamiam Language Group on its traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. Welcome. We have a busy night here. Item one, recognition of visitors' announcements. We do have some announcements. Trustee Larson and trustee Wong have some announcements.
Okay. June is National Indigenous History Month. During the month of June, we celebrate National Indigenous History Month to honor the history, heritage, and diversity of Indigenous peoples in Canada. This month is a time to learn about, appreciate, and acknowledge the significant contributions that First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples have made in shaping our country. In addition, we recognize and honor National Indigenous Peoples' Day on June 21st, which coincides with the summer solstice. This day serves as an annual reminder to celebrate the rich heritage, diverse cultures, and outstanding contributions of Indigenous peoples across Canada. Aligned with the board's strategic plan, the histories, perspectives, and learning approaches of Indigenous peoples are meaningfully embedded in district planning and practice. Students are provided with authentic opportunities to learn about, respect, and engage with Indigenous cultures throughout the year. National Indigenous History Month is a powerful reminder of our collective responsibility to honor, uplift, and amplify Indigenous voices in the spirit of truth, understanding, and reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Pride season, June 2025, as noted in the fourth strategic plan, the district actively addresses unconscious bias and privilege, systemic discrimination, and marginalization based on factors such as abilities, color, cultural identity, gender, gender identity, indigenity, political beliefs, race, indigenous beliefs, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. With this commitment, each year, the Richmond School District recognizes and supports Pride season, which refers to the wide range of Pride events that take place over the summer, June to September, when 2SLGBTQI+ communities and allies come together to spotlight the resilience, celebrates the talents, and recognizes the contribution of 2SLGBTQI+ communities. Although special attention is put on the Pride event during the summer months, they happen throughout the year in many communities. Our district would like to acknowledge the 2SLGBTQI+ communities and their allies, recognize their positive contributions to our community, and wish everyone a happy Pride season. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Secretary of Treasury, are there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. All information has been published on the district website and available to the public.
All right, thank you. I'll go on to the adoption of agenda. Trustees, you have the agenda in front of you. Any additions? Not seeing any. Sorry, trustee Beliza, did you want to make an addition? Oh, moved by trustee Beliza, seconded by trustee Yang. All favor? Thank you. And we're moving on to our presentation's brief special recognition presentation. We have presentation from Richmond Secondary, McRoberts, and Palmer. Do we have staff that wants to do the introduction here?
Assistant Superintendent Thompson.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce a group of students sitting behind me that come from Richmond Secondary, McRoberts Secondary, and Palmer Secondary. They've joined us tonight to share their experiences with student voice and leadership in mental health initiatives across our district. The strategic plan states our commitment to fostering healthy and resilient lifelong learners, and the projects that these students will be speaking about tonight aim to do just that. They'll be sharing about three different mental health initiatives: Agenda Gap, Here for Peers, and Beyond the Blues. Accompanying and supporting the students tonight with their presentation is our district counseling coordinator, Ms. Connie Easton. And before I ask the group to come forward, I just would like to take a moment, as part of this introduction, to recognize Ms. Easton's longstanding contributions to student mental health and well-being in our district. Some of you may know that Ms. Easton will be retiring at the end of this school year, and we're very grateful for her commitment to the collaborative projects, elevating student voice, community partnerships, and overall support for student mental health that she's leaving a lasting legacy with us. We are very grateful for her leadership and contributions, and we wish her all the very best. So as we welcome the students up, perhaps we can also recognize Ms. Easton's longstanding contributions. It's my pleasure.
Move down one. Good evening, trustees and guests that are here and staff. We are very, very happy to be here today and to share some of the work that's happened in our district across secondary schools around mental health. I'll be doing a brief introduction, and then the students will each be speaking to their area that they have. So I wanted to start by just giving a little bit of context. After the pandemic, I think we've all recognized that student mental health is a tough point issue. And what became really apparent was that students really wanted to talk about mental health. They wanted to be in a position to be able to be together as a group and to talk about this in a way that they could affect change, that they could take action, and that they could learn skills and be able to manage their own mental health and resilience. So we have been working on including curriculum that is now in our Grade IX PhD classes and in our CLE classes around mental health, evidence-based work from Dr. Kuchar. And then from that came school-based mental health wellness clubs and district-wide initiatives that supported mental. So the first one we'd like to talk about is Beyond the Blues. And we have our students here from Palmer who are going to talk about their experience of having their mental wellness club in their school and how that led them to hosting the Beyond the Blues event, which happens each year in our district and is hosted by different secondary schools. So over to our Palmer students.
May I grab the mic? So I'll be talking about our Beyond the Blues Mental Health Fair that happened on May 12th. The participants of this fair were Richmond Addiction Services, Pathways Clubhouse, Foundry, Community Services Society, and the AST team. So overall, in the fair, students were very engaged. Our booth for our mental health club had little bingo cards, which incentivized students to go out on their own and ask questions to like each foundation that was there. So if you finished the bingo card, you actually got to enter a draw. So that really got them like determined to go and like actually ask questions and like seek out more information about these mental health organizations. And also, each like organization had their own prizes and their own like very good information. So I think they were very well educated. Our booth did, like, we had some questions on our board, like, what are your tips for when you're feeling down and stuff like that? We had people write down that kind of stuff. And we also had questions, like, what is something that you did that you're proud of yourself for and stuff like that, so we could engage with the students? And yeah, I'd say it was very successful. We had a lot of participation. So on to Danya. Also, introduction, my name is Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura. I'm gonna be, oh no, my, sorry, oh my God, I'm so nervous. Hi, my name is Danya, and I'm gonna be talking about our school club that we host at Palmer. It's called Living Beyond the Horizon, which kind of like indicates like our name Beyond the Blues, because it's beyond the horizon. I'm gonna be talking about some events that we've hosted across the year. So one main event that we've done is hosting several events for Mental Healthness Week. Oh, sorry, Mental Wellness Week. So one thing that we do on our Instagram page is we have like daily posts talking about like different things to be awareness about, like, how can you practice self-care or how can you be more productive in school or like how to de-stress? And we like give a lot of tips on our page during that week. And something that we did every day during lunch is, this is how we got students to engage, is like we had some volunteers to help like design like a chalkboard and like put up three questions where students can come and like their sticky notes and like markers for everyone where each question, they could like come up and answer any question that they want. So it could be like, what's on your plate right now? Or what is one thing you do at home to de-stress? And it just like gets, and we also have like candy, so like people will answer a question. And we actually get like a lot of answers, and they're actually like truthful, and it like kind of makes people like look within themselves, like, oh, what do I actually do to de-stress? So that's something that we did during that week. Another thing that we helped out is conference days at our school where we hosted like presentations, where we helped like make presentations, or we could host like a little bit of a talk talking about like a variety of things. One activity that we did for conference day is for each class teacher, we handed out like pieces of paper where different students could write something about another student, say, in that classroom, or like someone else that they know in the school, preferably not their friends, just to like write a little special note for them, something to boost them up, especially during this time of the year where people are getting more stressed out near the end of the year. Which takes me to my next like activity that we kind of brought out. For our general meetings, we once had one of our like teachers who were like is well-known in it, and we asked like a bunch of students, what do you want to hear a presentation about? And the votes that won the most is depression. So we hosted a presentation talking about it and like the causes of it and like, how can you help someone you know who has it and like, how can you help them feel better? Lastly, I would just like to talk about like the more general things. We host like semi-weekly meetings, mostly around this time of the year or like the end of the semester. And basically what we do is like, we just put on like calming music, turn down the lights, and like have like coloring books just for like, say, any students who just need a place, a safe place to like de-stress, not think about school during lunch, and just like have a way to like kind of disappear from it all. But like, those are just a few things that we've done over the school year. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Danya. All right, let's move on. Our second program is Here for Peers, which is a district-based program offered in three of our secondary schools. We've been working with this program with the Canadian Mental Health Association for three years now, and we'll share some stats in a minute. But the students that are here from McRoberts are here to share their experiences about this program, which trains them to go into their feeder schools and do presentations around mental health literacy for Grade VII students, and then also do the same thing in their own school for Grade VIII students. So over to you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Leanne, and I'm a Grade 12 student at McRoberts, and I've been here for peers facilitator for about three years now. So I'm just gonna give a brief overview of what the program does. So Here for Peers is a youth mental health program that trains Grade 10 to 12 students on how to facilitate mental health workshops in Grade VII classrooms within their local elementary schools. The program was first piloted at McRoberts in 2023 and has grown since in membership. And you'll see some statistics on such in a moment. And so training for the program consists of one at six to seven hour training day, and then there's a coaching session where groups of facilitators will present a section of the workshop to ease their way into their facilitating role before they do the full workshop in front of a Grade VIII class in order to practice and to like ease out any kind of bits and pieces that they might struggle with before they go into Grade VII classrooms to present.
So my name is Persia. I'm in Grade 12, and it is my third year with Here for Peers. So I'm not sure if you saw the photo earlier, but that was a photo taken of us in Grade 10 when Here for Peers first joined McRoberts. And yeah, I think it was taken after we went through the workshop ourselves for the first time. And looking back at that photo, it just reminds us of how much we've grown since the start of the program and how much bigger the group has gotten since then. So yeah, what does Here for Peers mean to you? So for me, Here for Peers is an opportunity to help learn and share different ways to maintain your mental health and improve your mental health, and share with others some different resources that are available if they ever struggle with their mental health. And it also means that we're able to help these Grade VII students and also the Grade VIII classes we present to, just to know that there is help out there if they ever need it. I got involved with Here for Peers because when the opportunity to join was first announced in Grade 10, I thought it would be a great volunteer experience to facilitate these workshops. And I feel like I've gained so many skills in public speaking, communication, and so much more. And since working with Here for Peers, it has taught me that I actually really like working with kids, and I hope to do that in the future as well.
Yeah, so I joined Here for Peers after hearing the basis of the program because I was really excited about the level of involvement in the community, especially since we're reaching out to elementary schools in order to teach kids about mental health, which is something that's going to apply to every aspect of their lives. And so with every workshop, I found that I do make a lot of connections with the kids, especially since I was in their shoes not too long ago. And that connection is what helps bridge empathy between facilitators and learners, and that's what makes the environment a lot more comfortable for them to open up and to have such discussions, because mental health can be quite a vulnerable subject to discuss, and it can be quite difficult. But I find that because we were in their position, and we're still students as well, it helps to, yeah, it helps to bridge that gap between facilitator and learner.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bria, and I'm in Grade 12, and I've been a part of Here for Peers for three years now. And when I first started high school, I remember feeling very overwhelmed with all the new challenges that arise. And when I found out about this program that helps students who are at a stage, when they're at a stage, on how to like better improve their mental health when challenges arise, it definitely stood out to me. And being in this program has taught me how to really listen to others, be more confident in public speaking, and show up for others in a way that matters. It's important because sometimes students just need someone around their age who they can relate to, and Here for Peers creates that safe space. It's also been a big reason why I'm going into psychology and university, as I realize how much I love supporting others and spreading mental health awareness.
Thank you so much. And just to show you some of the impact of this program, here are some of the numbers. So over the last three years, we have gone from 49 youth facilitators to 69, and they've all been trained in the CMHA program. We've gone from eight to 10 secondary or elementary schools, and actually, this year we got to 12, where we've gone in and reached out to 594 Grade VII students this year. And the volunteer hours in the district this year were 2,070 in the area of mental health. So that went from 1,470 to 2,070 over these three years. So it's been really exciting to watch the program grow and see the facilitators take it on and make it their own. So. Thank you so much. Our next group, sorry. There we go. You can see Here for Peers in the classroom as well. There's some examples there that you can see students in the classroom. Our next group is from Richmond Secondary School, and this group is a group that is working in a program called Agenda Gap. Agenda Gap is affiliated with UBC and is different in the sense that it's very much focused on advocacy and teaching advocacy skills around mental health. So I'll turn it over to our students from Richmond Secondary School.
Hey, hi, everyone. I'm Yina, and I am a Grade 12 student from Richmond Secondary School. I introduced Agenda Gap to my club at school, and everyone else was interested to join. I'm happy to see the impact shaped through this program, and it's great to meet you all.
Hi, guys. My name is Julia, and I am currently also a Grade 12 student in Richmond High. Participating in Agenda Gap has given me a space to connect with other youth who are equally passionate about mental health. Nice to meet you all.
Okay, to begin, what is Agenda Gap? Agenda Gap is a youth-led mental health promotion program that centers the expertise of youth in identifying what fosters mental health in their communities. Our process is rooted in the belief that policies which affect youth are at their best when youth are involved in their creation. A key factor of Agenda Gap's mission is identifying upstream and downstream approaches. Agenda Gap uses an upstream approach, which focuses on shifting the baseline of health for individuals and communities through adding protective factors or changing existing features of the environment to be more conducive to good health. Compared to a downstream approach, upstream approaches are less centered on correcting short-term or temporary apparitions and more on improving our day-to-day lives. We had the opportunity to have two Agenda Gaps groups in Richmond who worked on improving our community. For the 2020 to 2021 group, our facilitator, Tasneet, was a participant with her group as pictured from the slide earlier.
We also had our 2023 to 2024 group just last year, and our mission was to work towards alleviating one of the major stress promoters among high school students, balancing academic stress and personal mental health. Expectations from parents, teachers, and peer competition are major stressors we found in our youth community. After participating in projects such as the art event, we found ways to deal with these stressors.
We've also had some wonderful opportunities, such as meeting with the former Minister of Mental Health, Yaara Sax, and we were able to present Agenda Gap and to bring awareness on youth mental health. Upon entering the meeting room, we found ourselves to be surrounded by many supportive adults with open hearts. Many of them shared their childhood experiences regarding mental health, which made us feel connected to them. Afterwards, the minister encouraged us to write a proposal on government spending on mental health promotion for teenagers. Later on, our team sent a pitch including three suggestions: peer support programming, green spaces in the community, and reform of the CLE classes.
We also had Ms. Connie Easton, the Mental Health Coordinator of the Richmond School District, come in as a guest speaker to talk to us about stressors from school with ways to reduce them. We also had art supplies where people from the school can join and express their feelings through creating paintings. This has inspired us to host another event with a guest speaker to promote positive mental health this year.
And our final accomplishment was presenting at the Mental Health in Schools Conference that the Ministry of Education sponsored this year. So four students from Agenda Gap from Richmond Secondary presented in a panel, part of what you just heard, and also more information about what they've learned, and along with representatives from two other school districts across the province. So we were chosen as one of the districts to do this presentation for all of the people who attended the Mental Health in Schools Conference.
So two weeks ago, as Connie said, we represented the Richmond Agenda Gap group and attended the fifth annual Mental Health in Schools Conference. During the event, we shared our personal experiences participating in the Agenda Gap program and spoke directly to educators about ways to improve mental health within our community. We also had the wonderful opportunity to hear presentations from three utter inspiring youth groups from across British Columbia. It was an enriching experience to connect with other youth who are equally passionate about mental health advocacy.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our mission with you today, and we hope that with your support, we can continue building policies that target the roots of mental health. We also hope this inspires other youth and adult allies to come together to create a safe and innovative space to create change in our communities, like the saying, for youth, by youth.
Thank you so much to all of our students. And you can see that this is a great example of advocacy at the school level, across schools, and in the community. So thanks very much.
You guys don't mind hanging around? We got a few questions probably to ask you. Trustee DeBlotney.
Yeah, well, this just blows me away. I can't believe, well, I can believe that in this day and age, we're talking about mental health. But there was a time when we weren't talking about mental health, and there was a lot of stigma around mental health, especially with families and young people. And the statistics were dismal of the number of young people that would get treatment for mental health issues. And I'm hoping, and I'm sure it has, that it's changed, but it needs to continue to change. And we've come a long way, and you're the prime example, and with Ms. Easton's help and our mental health teams. We've come a long way from a time where there were students at a particular high school that wanted to have a mental health club, and they were told, no. And this actually happened, it happened while I was a trustee, and it was not a good thing. And I'm glad, and I won't talk about the specifics, but I am so glad that we have come as far as we have. And we've learned from that particular incident that we do need mental health clubs, and it is very, very important. So I really appreciate everything you're doing. And access to treatment, of course, is so important, but students and families won't get access to treatment unless they know that that stigma is not there. So I thank you all for what you're doing. And we, some of us had been to the Pathways Dinner and heard a youth speak about her struggles with depression and being afraid to speak out, until finally, you know, there were some rash decisions, and we don't want that outcome. So thank you so much for educating your peers. And also, you know, you spoke about other groups across BC, that there were three other groups. Can you tell us which ones they were? And if you don't know right now, maybe Ms. Easton.
Yeah, I can tell you, there was a group from the interior, from Kelowna, called Random Acts of Caring. And that's actually a program that was started by a counselor in Coquitlam. And so that program, they shared the things they were doing in their school, and they were very much like what we heard from the Palmer group. So ways of creating access points in the school for students to engage in conversations about mental health and show support for each other through kindness. So that was one group. There was another group that was Antikton, yeah. And they were doing some really interesting things with outdoors and with nature and lots of very interesting intersections with the Indigenous ways of knowing and being. So yeah, and I think all of the presentations were really excellent. And the nice thing was that the students in the afternoon got to go through a workshop with Dan Nixon from Foundry. So all the students collected as a group and went outside and did work outside, and I think it was a lot of fun.
And Foundry has been a game changer, too. I mean, that gives youth access without, to be able to self-identify, which is really important as well. Thank you so much for presenting. I just think this is amazing and it just warms my heart, makes me feel happy. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Blotney. Trustee Larson.
My turn. Fantastic presentation that you've done. One of the things that really stands out when I hear is the wisdom and the courage of the young people to share their personal experience within your groups of people, at a conference, wherever that happens, sharing with us tonight what you're doing. It's so important, and you can hear the learning that's taken place with all of you that you've shared, and I think you most mentioned about three years kind of thing. What fascinates me the most is that we are learning from you. And I was fortunate enough to sit on two of the Agenda Gap. I don't know what you call, like...
We did the intergenerational dialogue with trustees and senior staff and people from the community and the youth that were part of the first Agenda Gap.
Yeah. And what fascinated me the most was... Yeah, and what fascinated me the most was, I thought, I think sometimes, with all good intention, we as adults, because we at one point were kids and at one point we went to school, that often we refer to our experience to think that that may be, well, that would be good for you maybe, or that would be. And to actually have it the other way around, to have kids speak about what's happening to them today, because it's a different time. It's a very stressful time. And to advocate for yourselves and your peers is, takes a lot of courage. It's not easy work, and you have your heart in it. It's, I'm most impressed with what you're doing. It's fantastic and so important. And it just, again, the passion that you all shared tonight with what you're doing and how you're growing, and again, guiding us, which we can also advocate, and it helps us to make sure we're doing the right advocacy when we hear from you and feel what you're doing. So thank you very, very much. I could go on much longer, but that wouldn't be appropriate, but thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations for an outstanding job in advocating for mental health issues in schools. And thank you for your wonderful presentations. I'd like to ask comment if you can. In advocating these mental health issues, what kind, if you know, impact would it have in terms of academic performance? In terms of school attendance and engagement? And personal behavior and discipline? Or social development in your cases? If you could comment, much appreciated. If not, appreciate for some time.
Yeah, so through Agenda Gap, we learned about upstream and downstream approaches. So we looked exactly at that, what is causing students to maybe not pay attention in school as much. And we find that it can lie in other factors, such as their home status or like their environments, the way that the light may be when they're in the classroom. It can interfere with the way that they feel at school. And even the stress that they feel from school itself will push them to sleep less and to sleep later, which just further fuels on. So what we're trying to do is to try to look more at the causes of these issues rather than trying to find short-term solutions. So that's what we've been doing with Agenda Gap.
Does anyone want to share the impact, for instance, at Palmer, being part of the Beyond the Horizon Club? How has that supported you in terms of your engagement at school? Has it helped to make you a better student?
I think it does. I think overall, just the talk of mental health kind of forces people to like look around them and see if people around them are struggling. And it kind of forces people to like, also like, in a bigger scale, talking about it will cause more change and more action. And it will cause more resources to be available for students to like be able to cope. And with me personally, living me on the horizon, with our conference day presentations, I've written the script for a lot of them. And through doing that, it also has made me like learn a lot more about mental health by researching on it for, to educate others. I'm learning as well, so I think that's really nice.
That's actually a nice bridge to the Here for Peers, because I think you've learned so much about mental health by having to go through the facilitator workshop and then teach it to students, right? Do you feel that that has helped you to be more resilient and affected your ability to be a better student at school?
Yeah, definitely, like, now I have a better understanding of how like stress and how these mental health issues impacts my brain and stuff. So it helps make life problems feel smaller, not as overwhelming, especially since I know how to cope and I know how it directly affects me. And I also have like calming skills as well in order to help mitigate such issues.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Trustee Ink.
Thanks very much, Chairperson. And yeah, just wanted to, right off the bat, thank all of you for being here tonight. To our leaders, thank you very much. I didn't unfortunately get all of your names, but you guys all did great with the presentation. And it's no small feat to do this in front of the, in a forum like this. So thank you. You have demonstrated that all of you are truly leaders by not only talking the talk as you have tonight, but actually walking the walk. And I think the results are pretty evident. So a big kudos to you. And, you know, talking about making a pitch to a federal minister. I think you guys are all ready for public service. That's good stuff. And also, thanks, my deep thanks to Ms. Easton as well for doing this work. We've heard from you several times in the space. And, you know, we're, I wish you all the best in retirement. And, you know, if there's opportunities to come back as a substitute, please do. It greatly help our recruitment and retention. So I urge you to consider that. But just two questions, and this is very open-ended, so feel free to jump in if you can. Perhaps in a sentence or two, if you can suggest any sort of resource or change that can happen in your day-to-day in schools, what would that change be to better student mental health for your peers and for others? Maybe you can all think on that, and then we can circle back to that first question. But my second question is around, how can we make sure that opportunities like these and the initiatives, the wonderful initiatives that you guys are doing, are sustainable in future school years?
Well, I can answer the second question, or at least shed some light on that. These programs happen because of the amazing staff that we have in schools. And so each of these groups of students has school counselors who are supporting them and who are alongside and make sure that all of the pieces are in place for this to happen. Because we know as adults, there's a lot happening behind the scenes and a lot of logistics that have to be managed. And so that is one way to continue to have these programs be sustainable is to support the staff that are running them in the schools.
I could answer your first question. So in our school, we do have a counselor's office where there is like a small room. It's called a quiet room. So like students can go there when they're feeling maybe down or, you know, something happened. So the counselors always make that room available for us. It's sort of like a dimly lit room. And there's like stress toys, there's blankets, there's pillows, there's a little desk, and, you know, just things to make us safe. And I feel like having more of these rooms where it's sort of like a sanctuary, like outside of the school environment, would be an upgrade for the school environment.
Much for sharing.
All right. Trustee de Blotney.
Just one more question.
One more question.
So a lot of the universities and colleges have dogs or animals that they can pet. And that has been proven very successful. Now, those animals have to be well-trained. But what do you think of something like that? Do you think that would, that would be good? Just because we have, we had a conversation earlier, and I won't get into it. But, you know, I'm just curious what your thoughts are on the...
So we had a therapy dog at one of our Beyond the Blues that was at Camby several years ago. And we've tried to see if we could arrange to have that happen again. As you said, it is a little problematic because it has to be set up so they have a separate space because the dogs get overwhelmed. And we do fortunately have several counselors who bring their dogs with them. And so we've had some therapy dogs that are, you know, available to students. I know there was one at Camby, there was one at Easton London. So I think it's a great idea, and I think all the science supports that. There's a lot of research around that.
Or therapy rabbits, therapy cat?
Let's see. Trustee Wong, follow away, Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Chairman. So thank you, the preschool students come here to get the excellent presentation. So now, actually, we know that this preschool have a different way to deal with the students in the school for the mental health wellness. So just like, is that really good, every day, did your, just like with the teacher to get the, know that the student to, how to express their unhappy or their behavior that you know, and get to know each other and have a gift, give out for them, to attract them to just come to you to express their feeling, right? So really good is that the Robert School is provide the grade sevens and the grade X student, you know, the student from the elementary transition to the secondary school have a really big challenge and fierce feeling. So you, actually, when you, when they not come to the secondary school, you will come to their class, a grade seven class, get them more comfortable, more confident to come to the secondary school. So the Richmond High is really good. Is that go ministry of the mental health and focus is that, is a border then to the community. Yeah, really, really good is that, more effective is that the student is that come to you, to come to the, come to you, just like the facilitator with you. It's just like elder sister and the peer. So they will be more comfortable and you have more contact because eight hours in the school with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong. Trustee Beliza.
Just pretend that you are an advisory valley to the Board of Education and Richmond. What would be your advice insofar as trying to address mental health in our district? Any suggestion?
I guess my advice would be like, it was mentioned before, to listen to the youth and what they think and be really open to their suggestions. And also, like, have informational, like, sessions, like, make sure to like inform others and like, just make sure to like, not keep the stigma going by really teaching people the truth, because there's a lot of stuff about mental health that gets thrown around when it gets like, like, for example, like, "Oh, I have ADHD because I'm quirky," or like other stuff, like misinformation spread about mental health. And that can be really, also in the media, there's a lot of misinformation about mental health, and that can be broken down by the actual truth and like the actual like information that can be spread instead of misinformation. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, you know, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for coming out tonight. And, you know, you always sort of look at things in life as a measure of, you know, how am I doing or how are things going? And one of the things I always think about is having an impact on people's lives and doing things that are meaningful. And I mean, that can mean a lot of things to different people. But I'm sure for the people, the students who you've come across in your path and who you've helped, I'm sure they think that your help has been most meaningful. I'm just curious about the grade sevens. Was it here? Yeah. You know, when you think about grade sevens, it must be a very stressful kind of year. And just curious, the kid, when you have to help or, you know, spending time with the grade sevens, did you see, like, I don't know if there's, probably was no follow-up, but in terms of them going into high school, did you ever get any feedback after the facts from the grade sevens? Or did you hear stories? I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, the work you guys did, how much of an impact it had on those kids moving into high school? I mean, probably a hard question to answer.
I would say we do, Here for Peers does focus on going to grade seven classrooms because it is a very stressful time transitioning into high school. Me personally, I haven't had any like experiences shared with me, but I know that we kind of explain to them that there is help out there. We tell them you can speak to your counselors, trusted adults, teachers. And we kind of make it known to them that there is help out there. And I'm sure that a lot of them have been more open to going to their school counselors or opening up. So, yeah, I think that's why Here for Peers is a really good program for that, especially for grade seven classrooms.
Well, I'm sure you planted a lot of seeds in them in terms of, if I get stuck, there are people out there who can help and programs and so forth. So on that note, like, thank you very much for being part of the solution. Connie, we are going to miss you very much in this district. And, you know, talk about being meaningful and having impact on students. You probably come to the top of the list there. And so, as David says, yeah, feel free to come back. You probably won't, but the door is always open, all right? Anyways, once again, on behalf of our, thank you all for coming. And, you know, when it comes to mental health, you know, we can't have enough discussion or talk about because the days of not talking about it, like, that can't happen anymore. Thank you, guys. Okay, and saying speech you give there, all our present, our presenters, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to go, we understand.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, keep moving down the agenda here. Item four, questions from the public. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward with questions regarding agenda items. Is there anyone out there that would like to come forward and ask a question regarding any of the agenda items? Okay, come on up. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So if you could state your name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Phyllis Tang, and I'm currently a Richmond resident as well as a piano music theory instructor. So I was really grateful for being able to listen to such a wonderful presentation from Ms. Easton's, I guess, affiliations and a group of students that she was able to work with. I don't know if this is more helpful, if the group is still here with us who will ask these questions, but just out of curiosity, just want to learn more about the structure of employees at work in initiatives related to mental health and wellness. Currently, within the school board, are there basically more than one particular employee who works on these initiatives on a full-time basis? Or there's, I mean, except for Ms. Easton, I don't know if there's other personnel who helps with coordinating some of these initiatives. And I'm going forward in terms of budgeting, because I noticed there are some particular priorities that were listed in some of the budgeting concerns. I'm just wondering, for now, how much funds would be allocated to projects that are related to mental health? And I'm also curious in terms of how, was it just the particular schools that chose to work, for example, with Beyond the Horizon or an Agenda Gap? Or is it like something that was particularly allocated to students? That, oh, for this school, they would be recommended to work with Agenda Gap? Or it's just something that was decided by the students?
Okay, well, I'm going to turn either to Secretary Trecher or Superintendent.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for inquiring about how we support students' mental health in our district. My colleague, Assistant Superintendent Thompson, stepped, just stepped out. But I would just start by saying that we have more than just one individual in the district that supports student mental health. We've, we take a very broad approach. Every adult in our schools, in our workplaces, certainly, we create conditions that support student mental health and wellbeing. And as I speak to this, she will be listening, and she'll give you some more pointed response if I, I'm sure there are gaps here. What I can share with you, though, is that we don't do this work in isolation. We work in partnerships, certainly, Vancouver Coastal Health. We have, we are at the table with the city, City of Richmond. And we have a number of partnerships that is in place. So Ms. Easton certainly has a specific role in the district, but she's not the only person in the district that is connected to this work. This is a work, some of my colleagues are sitting back there, our school leaders. This work happens in all our schools, in all our communities. Maybe I'll just invite Assistant Superintendent Thompson to maybe respond to a more targeted way in terms of how we support student mental health and wellbeing in our district.
Great. Thank you so much. I apologize for missing the question. I was just saying goodbye to our visitors. Yeah, so I think there are many folks who are all pulling together to support student mental health. And so what you saw... And so what you saw tonight is just a small cross section. And one of the things that are the folks who work in district roles like Ms. Easton this evening, a large part of her job is actually connecting a lot of those folks together so that they can work together. And so across schools, across counseling teams, they also made reference to the adolescent support team as well as school principals and vice principals, and again, those community partnerships that Superintendent UC has referenced. So it is very much a collaborative collective effort. And this was just a small sample tonight of some of the initiatives that really highlight the youth piece because what we heard very clearly from the youth is their involvement and their voice is crucial for the adults who are in those supporting roles to hear so that we are providing programming and resources and curricular opportunities that are relevant to their needs. Yeah, thank you so much.
If you had to maybe ask a more specific question because of my personal interest that I've had some personal experience on mental health, learning and awareness, so I'm particularly interested in this area. I was just wondering, I don't know if it's already been addressed, but I noticed some students mentioned that they particularly worked with Agenda Gap, which was initiative that is involved with UBC. I was just wondering, was that something that was recommended by maybe staff members? Or like how students might be like, from certain schools would work with Agenda Gap versus other students, I don't know if they were actually aware of Agenda Gap. So just wondering how that was kind of interconnected.
Well, truly, Chair, if I may, may I suggest if you are really interested, maybe you can contact Assistant Superintendent Thompson with your specific questions, just in interest of time. If that's of interest to you.
Yes, absolutely.
As I suspect you have some more specific questions related to an area of interest. Would that work?
Yeah, that'd be absolutely wonderful.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks again. Thank you.
All right, looking, any more questions from the public? Anyone on the on the camera? Okay. All right, we are going to move on to our executive report. Superintendent UC?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, good evening, everyone. It's always, it's always interesting when we have students show up in the boardroom and they present to trustees and to members of the public. And the last, one of the last comments that, you know, a student mentioned, listen to the youth and be open to their suggestions. And I think when we do that and we do that often, there are a lot of things we can learn from our young people. So that was just so wonderful tonight. I just wanted to touch on three items in particular. So today we had the opportunity trustee, trustee sergeant, Assistant Superintendent Thompson, and I visited Tomsett Elementary School where there was an unveiling of a mural today. And the reason I wanted to just use that as a touch point is because one of the things that we talk about a lot of seeds within our strategic plan, we talk about community, collaboration, creativity, cooperation, those wonderful things that we want our young people, when they graduate, when they leave us, when they go from elementary to secondary and then move on to post-secondary or the world of work, we want them to have those skills. Those are skills that are often referred to as those are global competency skills. But at the end of the day, those are just good skills that we want young people to have. And that was evident today when we visited Tomsett for the unveiling of the of the mural, just an incredible uplifting mural that was that was designed by Laura Kwak. Laura was a former Richmond High School alumnus. So she she graduated from our system and so it's wonderful to have a former graduate come back and do this incredible mural. And the nice thing about it is that she didn't do this work in isolation. It was a collaboration with the students, the staff and that school, that every single person in that school community had a touch to that, that, that design and that structure. And Laura was present today with her proud parents, who were present there as well and not too far removed from our days as a student in our district. And it was just so wonderful to be part of that celebration. And of course, a lot of our schools have murals. And one of the things that, you know, when you visit, when you visit schools and you see those murals, they actually demonstrate and reflect something about the community and the incredible commitment that the adults in those spaces bring each day to the work that we do. So kudos, not just only to Tomsett, but to our our staff who will create those conditions for learning. Secondly, I just wanted to mention that last Friday, we had across our district, employees, all employees in the district participated in Indigenous Learning Day. And one of the things you notice at the start of board meetings or whenever there is something that happens in our district, there's, the board starts with the acknowledgement of the land. And of course, that's only one part of paying respect to elders and Indigenous peoples who have lived on this land, a time immemorial. But we are, we continue to engage in that journey of truth and reconciliation as a school district that is committed in the work that we do each day, recognizing that, you know, in a good way, as Indigenous peoples will mention, that we are continue, we continue to strive to do that work in a way that is meaningful and that is impactful and that makes a difference for our young people. And lastly, Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize that, of course, this is the May board meeting. We have, we are sprinting very quickly to the finish line in terms of end of year. And if, of course, with end of year comes all the end of year activities, assessments, graduations, and so on. So it's a very busy time in our schools. We have some of our school leaders in the room, in the boardroom tonight. And I just want to acknowledge my colleagues in the room and also in the boardroom, but also our colleagues who are working all across our district for the incredible work that they do, not only supporting student success, but working with with colleagues as well because that work is important. And of course, it's always important to recognize that the excellence that is within our school district doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we have committed dedicated adults who show up each day and do the best they can and go above and beyond to make a difference for young people. So I make, it's a real privilege and it's a pleasure to each day do this work and to do it with really committed dedicated adults in our system. So that's my executive report for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so some housekeeping here. Oh, sorry, trustee Yang?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Chairperson. I just wanted to echo the appreciation for the Professional Development Day that we had on Indigenous content. And that's certainly one of many ways that we in fact embark on this journey. And in fact, you know, the TRC says a very, calls to action says very clearly that, you know, public institutions such as the school district should embark on those professional developments. And it's very, very important that we commit ourselves to that. So thank you very much to staff.
Thank you, trustee Yang. Okay, moving on to some housekeeping stuff here. Approval of minutes of prior meetings, there was a record of an in-camera meeting held of the board Wednesday, April 23rd. We have a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, April 23rd. Minutes are in your package. I'm looking unless there are any errors or omissions, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Trustee Wong moved second by trustee sergeant. All in favor? Thank you. There's a record of an in-camera special meeting of the board held Wednesday, May 7th, and another record of an in-camera special meeting of the board held Monday, May 12th. Okay, moving on to the big business. Number seven business arising from the prime minutes, we have the 2025-2026 Annual Budget Bylaw. There are three readings. And to provide his report, our Secretary Treasurer.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. My report is on page 23 and the budget bylaw is on page 28. The 25-26 annual budget was prepared according to the Public Sector Accounting Standards and the Ministry and Board Financial Reporting Policies. The total annual budget is $372 million with $281 million dedicated for the operating fund. This budget reflects the board's commitment in student learning and student success while promoting the organizational effectiveness to achieve long-term financial sustainability for the school district. The board has gone through a formal annual budget process and I'd like to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to all our educational partners for their support and input during this process. And with that, I welcome questions and comments from trustees.
Right, looking for questions for our Secretary Treasurer. Trustee Beliza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 29 of your report, there is a budget deficit of $3,803,780. Is that correct? I guess I'd like to have comment from you with regard to the impact of this deficit in terms of the our school district services, what services are being impacted. And secondly, in terms of sustainability, can we sustain this deficit? And if yes, I would have been. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Beliza, for that question. So this is actually a non-cash item. It's based on the accounting, you know, the public sector accounting reporting standards. It is actually not a budget deficit in terms of our operating, operating fund, operating budget. We have, as we talked about in the previous budget engagement sessions, the operating budget, the preliminary operating budget had about $2 million shortfall. And with the budget adjustments and budget strategies, we were able to balance the budget for the operating budget of the $2 million. So this one is relating to the amortization of the capital assets. It's a non-cash item and it doesn't represent any deficit. So we are able to cover all the shortfalls in our operating fund.
I hope there's a better way of presenting it in terms of non-deficit nature or notes, the financial statements, so that, you know, a public, you know, why? Because the presentation, if it is, you know, a render is, it's a deficit.
Yeah, so that's a really good comment. Unfortunately, the financial statements was prescribed by the Ministry of Education. We have to follow the prescribed form by the government. So but certainly, thank you for that, for that comment.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. So moving on, the recommendation from the Secretary Treasurer is that the Board of Education, School District Number 38 Richmond, approved the 2025-26 Annual Budget Bylaw by way of three readings. Do I have consensus that three readings of the 2025-26 Annual Budget Bylaw take place in this meeting? Need a thumbs up? Thumbs up? Thank you very much. I will read the first, I will, yeah, I'll read the first reading of the annual of the bylaw in full. Annual Budget Bylaw, a bylaw of the Board of Education of School District Number 38 Richmond called the board to adopt the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2025-2026 pursuant to Section 113 of the School Act, RSBC 1996-C412, as amended from time to time of the act. The board has complied with the provisions of the act, ministerial orders and Ministry of Education and Childcare policies, respecting the annual budget adopted by the bylaw. The bylaw may be cited as School District Number 38 Richmond Annual Budget Bylaw for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. The attached statement two shows the estimated revenue and expense of the 2025-2026 fiscal year and the total budget bylaw amount of $371,871,761 for the 2025-2026 fiscal year was prepared in accordance with the act. Statement two, four, and schedules two to four are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Can I have a mover and seconder for the first reading? Trustee Tablatini moved seconded by trustee Wong. I now call the question. All those in favor? Post? Any opposed? Okay, the first reading is carried. I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with the with the School Act Minister orders and ministry, ministry policies. The total budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year amounts to $371,871,761. Statement two, four, and schedules two, four are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the second reading? Moved by trustee Larson, seconded by trustee Yang. Oh, sorry, trustee sergeant. Move. Okay, can I move a second there? And are there any questions or discussions? Hey, trustee, I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Second reading is carried. I will now read, do the third reading of the bylaw as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with the School Act, ministerial orders and ministry policies. The total budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year amounts to $371,871,761. Statement two, four, and schedules two to four are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the third reading? Moved by trustee Beliza, looking for a seconder. Trustee Tablatini, thank you. Are there any questions or discussions? Now, this is the last opportunity to have discussions or questions before we do the final vote. So you know what, I'm assuming everyone has a comment. So we're just going to work our way. You want to start on the other side?
No, it's okay.
Okay, so trustee Tablatini, any comments?
Oh, I, well.
Questions or comments? Sorry.
I, not a question. I just wanted to talk about the process because, you know, our budgeting starts in January, really, actually even before. And, you know, we, there's so much time spent with our budget advisory working group and consultation and taking comments and and then leading up to, you know, final budgeting, you know, there's, there's, there's just a lot of meetings, a lot of input. And I think our financial team and our secretary treasurer have done a fantastic job at looking under every rock pile to, you know, to find cost savings. And I just wanted to congratulate the finance team because they've just done an amazing amount of work and just some, you know, it kept us transparent and, and, and above board on everything that we've done. So I think I really appreciate all the work that our secretary treasurer, Ms. Wang, has done. Thank you, and her team.
Thank you, trustee Blatini. Trustee Wong, do you have any comments, questions or comments?
Good, Chairman. So the annual budget is really detailed and thanks for the financial departments. And you know that we have spent almost a half year beginning and get the timeline, everything, processing procedure and get this out and come out to consultation from public, from our partner group. So this will be good for, so, thank you.
Trustee Larson?
Just to add so far to the conversations that have already happened, but one thing that really impressed me this year was not only our finance team, which is amazing, but also the wisdom of our partners when we had groups and the ideas and that the questions that were asked and the responses from people. And again, the wisdom of sharing what's actually happening out there and what the needs are, which allowed finance team. needs are, which allowed finance team and us to approve and so on. So that was most, thank you.
Hey, Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I do want to start off by offering my thanks to our Secretary Treasurer, her team in the Finance Department for, for the professionalism year after year. It's, it's not easy feat to put together a budget for an organization with a budget north of three hundred million dollars. And I think the public doesn't necessarily have that top of mind all the time. And so I think credit where credit is due. And to our partner groups as well, I think they're essential every year in this process and in, in participating in this process. And certainly, we try to make it as inclusive and transparent as possible. I do want to address what we're seeing tonight in our budget in terms of how we're able to get from a deficit of a little bit over two and a half million dollars to a balanced budget. And what that essentially means, and this is a tale as old as time, I think, is, you know, asking our district and our staff to do a little more with a little less. And the unfortunate reality, and I think certainly unfortunate for us this year, is that we're having to make these proposals to reduce. And whether we call it a review or a reduction or a decision not to fill a position, you know, that essentially really is a direct or indirect cut to our system. And as I'm looking at some of the proposals that we're, we're going to go ahead with, we have library technicians that we're not going to be filling. That means our library techs are going to be doing a little more cataloging with a little less help. We're asking, we're not continuing to fill a position in science and sustainability. That means less supports for teachers that teach science and sustainability. We're asking for, you know, less on-call staff to fill our administrative assistance positions. That means, you know, we're asking our, those who are not sick in our offices in schools to do a little more when they have a little less. And so, you know, I think time will tell whether or not these impacts will impact our students and, you know, as we have firmer numbers in September, that will tell. But certainly, this is the case in what we're seeing tonight. I want to talk about the big picture underfunding that we're seeing as well, because over the past year, we've heard provincial government in Victoria's letting us know, letting the public know that, you know, their priority is to maintain base funding for essential public services such as public education. You know, and, and so when you just oppose that to what you're seeing in not only this, this district, but in many other districts, I mean, in Surrey, you're seeing a sixteen million dollar deficit. In Burnaby, you're seeing a deficit north of four million dollars. And in rural communities as well, multimillion dollar deficits. And so when we're talking about maintaining core funding, we really truly have to ensure that school districts are supported adequately. And that means that that base funding has to be sustainable in a way that doesn't put school districts in these precarious positions. And, and to look ahead, I think, you know, much of what the budget is proposing is a rollback, as opposed to the previous two years where we've been able to grow and support our learning communities. I think in this environment, we still is important to emphasize the need to maintain the quality that we currently have because, you know, we say it all the time around this table that our district is reputable and respectable in, in, in the world of public education in B.C. because our, our support systems are so robust. And so in, in talking about rollbacks, I genuinely feel that we need to make sound financial decisions while at the same time maintaining the belief that we need to avoid erosion of something good that we currently have. And that means we have to advocate hard as, as governors of this system, recognizing that there will be opportunities to pitch to the Ministry of Education, to our decision-makers, to MLAs. There's a provincial Select Standing Committee on Finance where this board will have that opportunity. And so taking all the opportunities that we have to voice those concerns. All in all, you know, I, I'm sorry to say that it brings me little joy to support this year's budget, but at this point, the bare minimum, the fact that the district needs a financial plan to move forward for the school year and a budget that is legislatively compliant, I believe that staff has done that. And so I'll leave it at that, and we carry on and we carry forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yang. Trustee Sergeant.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. This has, it's already been said about the process, but I'm very, very proud of the process we have. I talked to others about it, to have a Budget Advisory Working Group with stakeholders that meet at least four times in the budget cycle, to talk about what their beliefs are, what they think we should do. The process has been long and it, but it has been very insightful and very collaborative. We have had some fairly good years. This year wasn't a good year. We asked people to think about the two-point-five-million-dollar cuts. We, as Trustee Yang has says, we, we have incredible staff that rolled up their sleeves, worked even harder than normal, and I mean district staff as well, on-the-ground staff, admin staff, our senior team staff, that really looked at every budget and said, okay, how are we going to find this two-point-five-million-dollar? So tonight, I don't want it to be lost, that this isn't a great budget. It's, it's being managed in a way that we can be accountable and transparent and, and we can't have a deficit budget. We're not allowed to. So I wanted to thank all the staff that, on the ground, in this building, everywhere, that really said, okay, let's roll up our sleeves again and see where we can tighten. But I don't think it should go amiss that we are not getting funded adequately from the provincial government. And I know our province, along with all the other provinces in Canada, are in a very precarious situation now. But I think as advocates, we have to ensure that we tell the public that, and the government, that we need public education to stay highly funded. And that means inflation. That means keeping up with inflation. That means keeping up with the high costs that are, that are happening to us and to our community. So as an advocate, I will continue to work very hard through our provincial association. There's a lot of work being happening right now along the ideas of how most districts are in a deficit budget. And those, these are cuts. And as has been mentioned, you move things around, you don't fill this position, you don't do this, you cut here, those are cuts. And, and so I'm sorry that we have a two-point-five-million-dollar deficit. If this happens again next year, I really don't know what we're going to be doing. We're going to be hitting core, core funding for students. But I, what I also wanted to highlight was, when we have those discussions, it was all around our strategic goals and our strategic priorities. And I think that was really helpful, that everybody was working towards where we want to go for the next five years. So I think this board has to continue very strong advocacy, has to say that, yes, we passed our budget, we did what we were supposed to do, but on the backs of some people that have to work even harder than they are now. So again, to the Secretary Treasurer, the leader of our financial house, our financial house is in order, and nothing gives me more peace as, as a trustee than that. And I know you have a whole team behind you that has been working hard too. So Cindy, Ms. Wang, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for always making sure that this board is looked after, that we do the right thing, and that we have the right information. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sergeant. Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Office of the Secretary Treasurer and staff, my fellow trustees, and all our community partners for the time and effort. Can you imagine many consultations have been done and just to determine the priorities of the school district? So I'm glad that we have a budget, meeting, while meeting the needs and priorities of the district, we have a limited budget, just like instructing us to do more for less. So I think for all the parties I mentioned, thank you so much for sharing that responsibility and the, the way to show that everybody had been collaborating, supporting each other to meet the needs of the district. And while we have a budget presentations that shows the income and the expenses, how I wish that in addition to that, we can show a, like a, a financial statement that shows what we own and what we owe as a district. That's another way of, I guess, of identifying and showing a kind of financial statement that shows how stable and how sustainable insofar as our commitment and priorities to meet the needs of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Beliza. My comment, I mean, everything's kind of been said already, you know, hats off to Secretary Treasurer Wang and her team. They've done an amazing job. You know, we just kind of used to seeing all the time, but we do appreciate it. As for the budget, it's a two-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit. I mean, that's not a good news, but I, I do take some solace in the fact that the cuts that we've made or changes of the budget have been done with a lot of care and attention. And, you know, basically, you get the cards dealt, so you play the best hand you can. And I think you've always done that, and we continue to do that. Be nice to get some better cards next year, but I guess we'll have to wait and see on that one. So thank you, trustees, for your comments. And I now, let's see, now call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The budget is passed for the 2025-26 year. Now, the 25-26 Annual Budget Bylaw has been read a first, second, and third time, is passed and adopted this 21st day of May, 2025. We now have a further recommendation, further that the Board authorized the Chairperson of the Board, Superintendent and Secretary Treasurer to sign and submit the 2025-26 Annual Budget to the Ministry of Education and Childcare before June 30, 2025. Can I have a mover and a secuder for this motion? Moved by Trustee Larson, seconded by Trustee Wong. Any questions or any discussion? All right, I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for your work and contribution during the annual budget process. And we really need that. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now moving on back to our agenda here, item seven. All right, new business. We're looking at advocacy to members of parliament regarding federal programs. And I believe, Trustee Yang, you'd like to speak to this?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Chairperson. So we're fresh off a federal election in, last month. And so, you know, we have two members of parliament in Richmond, and, you know, one of the most important things that we do around this table is to advocate and advocate hard for, for our students, for families, for our learning community. And certainly, the federal government has, has a part to play in ensuring that public education is sustainable and continues to thrive in our community. And so, you know, I, I have a motion prepared that I will be happy to move, but before I do that, I just wanted to stress that, you know, much has been said about the federal election, this past federal election, but little has been said about how Ottawa is going to support local communities in everyday domestic issues. And as I've said last board meeting, I think that discussion needs to happen. It needs to, you know, our elected representatives at that level need to understand the real needs that communities are seeing. And I'm not sure if that was, given the appropriate amount of time during the election campaign, seeing that a lot of talk was dominated by international relations issues. But this is a good start to reengage with our members of parliament. So I'm ready to move the motion, if I may.
Yep.
That the Board write a letter to Richmond Members of Parliament and to highlight education priorities of the Richmond School District. And further that, the letter requests support for issues and programs that relate to the federal government, including settlement workers in schools, Swiss, the National Food, School Food Program, and early learning and childcare.
Okay, I'm looking for a secuder, seconded by Trustee Tablany. Are there any questions or discussion? Oh, you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairperson. And so just again, a very boilerplate advocacy motion to write to our members of parliament, but I did decide to highlight three items for request, particularly around settlement workers in schools, as we've written to the Immigration Minister at the last board meeting about the sudden cancellation of the LINK program. You know, and I hope that Swiss continues to thrive for our community because it supports vitally our newcomers that are new to this country and need that help to navigate not only the public education system, but, you know, life in schools and around schools. And so the federal government really needs to understand that this is a vital program. And rather than taking up important resources for that program for reporting purposes, maybe more of that resource should be actually spent to service folks in our community. And so highlighting that. The National Food, School Food Program has something that's been talked about in years, and it's slowly being rolled out. I believe that there was a recent announcement, but we're still wanting to hear more details and more supports to grow the capacity, expand access, and something that I'm sure our district will be willing partners in, as well as early learning childcare. You know, how many times do parents in the city center, or in fact, every neighborhood in Richmond, telling us that there's no childcare space in their communities? And so, you know, addressing those needs is certainly important for, you know, the kids and also for working parents as well. So I'll leave it at that and looking forward to.
Trustee Sergeant, followed by Trustee Tablany.
Thank you. I, I didn't get the full motion, but friendly, not amendment, but suggestion that in the letter, we request a meeting, because I think it's one thing to receive a letter, they probably won't even see it. But I think it's another thing to have a meeting, welcome them to Richmond and to education here, and give them information, put eyes on each other. And so if your motion is saying more than just write a letter, that's great. I think we can just add that.
And we can fold it, yeah.
An addition on the bottom, we would love to host you and blah, 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 as soon as possible. Thank you.
Trustee Tablany?
Yeah, well, Trustee Sergeant stole my thunder. I was going
I was going to suggest a meeting because we have advocated with our MPs before on these issues, these same issues, I would say, for the most part. And it's time to reinforce them because we have been fighting, you know, to keep our Swiss workers and other programs for a long time. And that, you know, there's always the threat of cuts, and now we're here. So I think it's important to have a meeting with our one returning MP and our one new MP. Or not so new, should understand the issues in our community. But it would be good to meet with them. So I think it's very important. Thank you.
Right. Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for information, I think the chair has already written a letter to the Minister of Immigration, Refugees and Citizenship regarding urgent request to reinstate the LINK program in Richmond School District. So this motion would serve as a follow-up to that. I think, insofar as the district Board of Education is concerned. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Anyone else? All right, as to Trustee Yang's motion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Trustee Yang. Okay, it's our second opportunity to get questions from the public. If anyone out there has a question, they're welcome to come up to the table and ask it. Otherwise, we will move on. All right. And we have our standing committee reports. Audit Committee, Chairperson Yang?
Thank you very much. So our meeting was held on May 6th, and our next meeting is scheduled for September 2025.
Thank you. Education Committee, Trustee Larson?
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend, so thank you to Trustee Yang for chairing that meeting. It was held on Wednesday, May 14th, and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 11th at 6:00 P M.
Thank you. Facilities in building, I'm the chair of that one. Minutes of the meeting held April 2nd are attached for information. And the meeting was held on Wednesday, May 7th. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 4th at 4:30 P M. Finance and Legal, Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you very much. Minutes of the meeting held April 16th are attached. And a meeting was held on Wednesday, May 14th. And the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 11th at 10:00 A M.
Thank you. And as always, Policy Committee, we've got a bit of work to do. Trustee Toblatney?
Policy Committee always has work to do. Okay, so the first is Recommendation Policy 102, Diversity and Inclusion. In accordance with Board Policy 204, Creation and Revision of Policy and Regulations. At the December 11th, 2024 Public Meeting, the Board of Education approved Policy 102 for entering into the Partner Group Review Process. And the Partner Group Review Press Process took place from December 12th to 24th, or 12th, 2024 to February 28th. And in addition to feedback from Partner Group Representatives at the December 2nd Public Meeting of Policy Committee, feedback was received from the RTA during the review and timeline incorporated into the revised policy. The timeline does show all of the review process, and the policy is now here with a recommendation that the Board of Education approve revised Policy 102, Diversity and Inclusion.
Okay. Recommendation is moved. Looking for a seconded? Trustee Wong, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Trustee Yang?
Thank you. Just wanted to say a quick appreciation to staff for this piece of policy refresh. Clearly aligns with our strategic plan in terms of equity and inclusion. Just wanted to also thank staff for making the addition to define anti-racism in this policy. I think it's very important that we align with the provincial K-12 anti-racism plans. And when I first saw the draft, it wasn't there, but I'm glad to see it on the final draft. So a big appreciation. I know Assistant Superintendent Brodugem isn't here, but she's let that work and she's done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None. Recommendation is carried. I believe we have another one?
We have another one. That the Board of Education approve revised Policy 103 bylaw, Complaints and Appeals by Students, Parents, and the Public. In accordance with Board Policy 204, Creation, and Revision of Policy and Regulations. And this is staff from time to time bring rewrite to an existing policy or regulation for the committee's consideration. And we then look at the rewrites, revisions, and bring it forward to Policy Committee, Public Policy, and a public meeting of the board. Staff have conducted a review of the complaints and appeals and from a number of other districts across the metro. And also, the Office of the Ambassadors has developed a guide to assist public sector organizations with the policy development. And so the draft is attached and incorporates the Partner Group feedback. And so it is here for looking for approval. And we have the timeline before you of all the processes that we have gone through to this.
Recommendation is moved by Trustee Toblatney. Looking for a seconded? Trustee Yang? Second, any questions, comments? Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just hope that when we approve this particular bylaw, we can communicate to our students, parents, and the public through our school messenger email so that everybody will know and whatever process we have, so that they will be guided accordingly with the best communication strategy and system we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, recommendation is carried. One more piece of business?
There is one more. Notice of motion. Hang on. Am I not printed? Notice of motion to the June 18th, 2025 Meeting of the Board of Education. Notice of motion that a recommendation will be presented at the June 18th Public Meeting of Board of Education to approve the revised Policy 201 bylaw Board Operations. So that will come to the next meeting. And I want to thank our staff that have worked diligently to do edits and set wordings and update these policies that some of them have been very old and have been redone and looked at. And some were redundant, and policy is always working. It's always changing. So thank you to everyone that works on policy. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Toblatney. Okay, we're moving on to our Board Committee and Representative Reports. Councilboard Liaison Committee, is anyone report? Anyone to report? Anything? Meeting was held April 30th. BCST Rep, is there anything to report? ECSTA Rep?
No, just that we were with the AGM and it was...
ECPC Rep, anything to report?
It's me. Nothing particularly at this point.
Okay. Correspondence, we did get correspondence for information. A letter from the Board of Education to the Ministry, or letter from the Board. This is a letter from the Board of Education to the Minister of Immigration, Citizenship, and Refugee Regarding the LINK Program dated May 14th, 2025, which Trustee Belisa had mentioned earlier on. Beyond that, folks, I bring this to the end of the night. I'm looking for a mover and a seconded to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Trustee Yang, seconded by Trustee Larson. Any questions or comments? Okay, all of favor? All opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming. You're a part of the approval of the budget, so this has been a big night. So thank you for being a part of it, and drive home safely.